That way. I'll communicate to them when I hear something, but they're not coming back to us. They're not being proactive.
But what they have said to us is if you see anything, you know, you've heard this now since probably nine eleven. You sit, you know, see something, say something, you know, and, and I think a lot of people don't do that. Even if you think, and, and the commanding officer said to us, even if you think it's nothing, but you just don't feel right about it, something there in the back of your head stands up or neck stands up, call nine one one and they will come. So, you know, don't ever hesitate if you see strange activity in.
But Frank, this stuff's happening four on one.
Well, it's happening during the day also, you know. But, but you could see a suspicious activity during the day and say, hey, wait a second. There was a guy that knocked on my door the other day during the day was knocking on the doors. I didn't know who he was. He shouldn't be doing that. We don't allow that in this village. Did I call nine one one? No, my mistake. I should have probably because who knows if that person was, was, you know, checking out houses so he can come back that night with his friends or whatever, seeing people away on vacation. If you don't, if, if anything seems unusual, call nine one one.
I just want to hear, people call Billator, don't call Billator, you're wasting time. Call nine one one, then call Billator.
Yeah, my neighbor last, last week, she felt like she was swallowed into the neighborhood in a car. Called my wife at my house. And then she pulled it and stopped and waited, they drove and then waited at the top of York. They parked at the top of Brook and then eventually drove away. I don't think she called the cops though, but that's a good point she totally should have.
Absolutely. If you, if you don't feel safe and you think, you know, you'd be surprised.
I'm curious to know the statistics of a village that has surveillance to see like at any given time of the month where like crime is high. Is it a deterrent, like just having it there to keep these people that come canvass the neighborhood? I'm sure these people did not just stumble into Flower Hill on Saturday night for the first time. So I'm just curious to know, like, if we take a nearby village that has a surveillance and if these things happen there, how often, maybe it isn't a deterrent, just having it there. I don't know.
I, I know that another village that has camera system, a very extensive one, has similar problems that we have.
Yeah.
It's an after, the criminals know.
They kind of have similar problems, but not as many problems. So like.
Well, how, how do you, how do you know?
That's what she's asking. Is there statistics?
I, I don't have the statistics. I just know speaking to other mayors, I'm like, hey, now you have the camera system. How's the crime? They're like, we still have it.
But maybe they have more, like, we don't know if we have.
I, I don't, I don't know if I can get those statistics. I can ask the sixth precinct if that's something they'll share. I don't know what they're, what they are allowed to share and what they don't share. I, I, I can make that ask and hopefully we can have.
Saying like crime's gonna disappear. There are bad people everywhere, like I went from Queens, I'm like, I had a robbery before I moved. The guy broke in and you were sleeping upstairs. So the irony is like sixteen months later, my son goes to me, mommy, I thought you said this was a nice neighborhood. I'm like, it is a nice neighborhood, it's great. And so my kids are a little spooked out too, so I'm just like, what can we do just to kind of minimize? We're never gonna prevent crime, obviously.
And, and maybe that's a patrol and maybe that's cameras, but I, I will then speak. So then can I, let me finish first. So I will speak with the sixth precinct between now and next month and see if there's the statistics or something they're able to provide us. Again, until I ask, I don't know. I don't know what they're allowed to give us from other villages or not.
Yeah, I, I was, I was with, and today I was with a, a family that literally said to me, what, they live in Seaclef, the village of Seaclef. Also, I think they're under Nassau County.
Yeah.
Right? And I said, oh, I live in the village of Flower Hill. What, what, what happened to me? She goes, what do you mean? Village of Flower Hill doesn't have their own private security? Seaclef does.
Okay.
And I was like, no, we don't. I'm just saying, like, it's almost starting to become like, we all bought, you know, the, the village of Flower Hills, they, I, I assume in the past ten years, the increase in that house value has also been tremendous and the value is here. The value is here to increase, you know, maybe our, our house taxes a little bit to take care of this. I think people are willing to do that. So it's almost embarrassing at this point when we go to these other towns and we're like, yeah, this is happening. We don't even have a, you don't have patrol? No, you're not like, no.
There's, there's, I, I don't know of one village on this north, uh, that has private security.
Oop, East Tonsus.
East Tonsus.
I'm talking about North of Northern. Oh, North of Northern, okay.
And Seaclef.
Lake Success.
Lake Success does.
Lake Success has their own, oh no, they have their own police department. You can't say Sands Point either because they have their own police department. That, that's very different.
And a lot of the Grayneck villages have their own police.
But let, let me do my, we just.
Have you ever thought to have, like, no police department here? Has that ever been addressed or?
Okay, so.
I know that's maybe a crazy.
Let, 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 let me, let me, let me address this.
Tom, sorry.
Just a minute, let me speak. Can I answer her question first and then you can speak? I, I, I will let you speak next, but this nice woman already asked a question. Frank and I spoke with Deputy Mayor Genes and I spoke with the Port Washington Police Department about a year ago.
Numerous times, yeah.
And we asked them, hey, what would it cost us to join your service? We would like you to extend your area of service down to Northern Boulevard and include us. After they did, um, analysis, they didn't even just get, they didn't give us a cost. They just said, we're not interested in expanding our service. They rejected us. I said, you won't even give them us a number? What if it's some great number, you make a lot of money on this? They go, we're not, they weren't interested. They were not interested in providing, extending their service down to Flower Hill. It just wasn't something they wanted to do. Now, if you want to do our own police department, knowing what Mutton Town did when they added a police department, the startup costs alone are millions of dollars to just start up. What's our annual budget here?
Four million?
No, that's including fire. So without fire, what's our annual budget? It's like.
Without fire?
Two, two, two.
Two point one million?
Yeah.
Our village budget would probably triple immediately.
So would it be even realistic or feasible to maybe have a conversation with all of the neighbors that are, that incorporate with Flower Hill, like Roslyn, Manhasset and Port? So that we're not approaching Port like, hey, take over all of Flower Hill down to Northern and approach Manhasset and Roslyn Police Department?
So Manhasset is not a village. Manhasset is actually Nassau County. It's an unincorporated area.
No, I understand, like both the Port Washington Police Department, like the Manhasset Police Department and the Roslyn.
There's no Manhasset.
There are no Manhasset.
No, we have a, there's a Nassau County Police Department and this individual police department, Sands Point, Port Washington, Lake Success, Glen Cove. The, it, we, we went that, we went the route. We thought maybe, maybe we'll get better service from Port Washington Police. They're not interested.
Think, think about the amount of personnel, the amount of equipment that you need to run a police department.
And benefits.
And benefits. Police officers on Long Island make close to two hundred thousand dollars a year. So you would need fifteen or twenty police officers to patrol the village twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. You're talking about a ten million dollar payroll. So it's not a, it's not a realistic.
All right, pivot to your question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for waiting.
Mayor Board, appreciate you having me tonight. My name is Vida Paul. I've been living in Port Washington now, Flower Hill, for thirty years. I live basically right across the street. You take a rock and break my front window. Uh, so like to talk about.
Did you take a rock and break a window?
You just avoided.
You just said you took.
I was bucked. But anyhow, I'm gonna talk about this here. June seventh, uh, I stopped a robbery. There was a black, um, Explorer SUV that came onto my property. And I was looking out the window around nine PM and nine, and that was my daughter's boyfriend at the time, he had a black SUV. I'm looking, I'm looking, so I decided to go outside. And there was two black gentlemen in a car, all sunny, put them reverse, no front plate, and they took off. Just recently, Wednesday night, at eleven PM, my whole family was sound asleep. I had, uh, the garage door open. My son, uh, sleeps underneath, uh, the garage, came into my room screaming, that, somebody opened up the garage door. By the time I got up, the day is, my wife is punching me, kicking me, get up, because I was sleeping and haven't slept in a couple of nights because I had a head cold. By the time I go outside, or you can listen, I got on the video and everything else, the car was parked by the cemetery. The, uh, the gentlemen were going back and forth like, like, oh my God, oh my God. We thought we were locked the car, meanwhile they're locked. The garage door, that's twenty years old and the garage door made so much noise that you could hear the car screaming up the block. So needless to say, this happens all the time. Nine PM, eleven PM, I had a two o'clock, uh, person come onto my property. And I was very fortunate enough to be home at the time, myself. I'm, I'm an engineer. I've opened up a lot of buildings in Manhattan, the Trade Center buildings. So I've been an engineer for thirty-seven years. And Mr. Mayor, Flower Hill is great. I think we need to put pressure the sixth precinct, okay? It's not that, okay, if we want police officers, it's gonna cost a lot of money. I just spent thousands of dollars on new camera systems, new alarm systems, they're useless. I got them, who can do it? They have fake plates, stolen vehicles. If police department doesn't do their job, that we're already paying taxes for, let them do rounds. Let them drive around two, three cars in different neighborhoods at Flower Hill. Let, since there's so much activity that's been happening to us and our neighbors, cars broken in. In thirty years of my, my life, the last two years have been heartbreaking. My heart's been like pounding. I want to get out of New York State. I can't take it anymore. I've, I still, I raised four kids in this town. I have two more children. I can't wait till they leave Sharp High School. I really, I'll be very honest with you, Mr. Mayor. And it's really frightening. I was so frightened Wednesday night and nothing scares me. I've been through nine eleven, floods. I could, we could talk off the record on how much stuff I've seen in my life, but this Wednesday night really scared me.
Most importantly, when these issues happen, did you call the police?
Yes, we did. And you know what they told me? Are they there now? I'm like, no, they left.
Did the police come?
They took no report, no matter.
The police, so the police did not.
Does it show up in the data?
Yeah, that's true.
So there's no police.
There's no, there's no.
I can't tell you though, that I, every night, I sit in my living room, every night between nine o'clock and ten thirty or so, a Nassau County Police, I live on Cherrywood, a Nassau County Police car comes down with its light bar on, not flashing, red and blue on each side, just flowing. I see it almost every night. So they are driving around. Don't think that they're not driving around. The problem is that they have two cars, they have to, they have to cover, well, you don't, do you look out your window all night? You don't know.
We have, we all have the same ring cameras.
Your ring camera doesn't pick up a car on the street.
It picks up lights on the top of a police car.
Well, mine doesn't, but.
I was here three months ago and we had this one, little, no woman over there, had her, happened to her in the middle of the day. And we had a, a crowd here, they had to, and the police, and you had, they each had the representative of Nassau County. And they, the first thing they pulled out is, like you said, Mr. Mayor, they pulled out the statistic, how low our, our crime rate is here. And since that day, I mean, I just met names I haven't met in ten years, that are coming up, did anything happen, you don't call? Because in the last two weeks, I drove at least seven or eight break-ins. So I mean, I don't know, it could be, you know, like you said, we could address it to them, we could write them and put pressure on them, but.
So let's, let's.
The guard was here and they, and it just got.
What I'm going to do is I, I hope you all have subscribed to the mayor's newsletter. If you haven't, shame on you all. But you, you give Ronnie your, your email address after the meeting or during the meeting, you'll print it out. I will send everyone in the village, the email addresses of those people that we should all be writing individually. I can yell and, okay, one second. I can yell and scream as an individual and I will. And I'll advocate for everybody here, but if I have twenty, thirty, forty people hounding Delia and hounding Pat Ryder and hounding our officer, Commander Vitelli, that, that, at some point, hopefully that will help a lot versus one person, who's my board, harassing the police to get more coverage. So I, I need everyone's help to do that. I need everyone's help to continue to report these things and, and demand that the police come and take a report. If they say we're not gonna come, say no. I want to speak to your commanding officer. Send me an officer so I can file a report because they're statistic driven. I, I know what Pat Ryder does. He's very statistic driven. If they don't have the statistics, they're not gonna provide additional patrols to our village. So they need those statistics that say a stranger danger, somebody did this, somebody, they need those statistics. Your garage door was opened up in the middle of the night, it wasn't you. They need to come and fill a report. Yes, ma'am.
I, I think we're all, we all know that that is going to take a long time, going through the sixth precinct. It's going to be a battle. It's, I, I think we all want to see Flower Hill do something. And that maybe means something more immediate. Getting off-duty security two, three, hiring two, three, see, off-duty security guards from the hours of eleven to six in the morning. I think people are willing to pay for that. Why can't we just do it?
Because we're not going to just do that. That's not a good use of our tax dollars. I am going to investigate the costs. I'm gonna, I'm gonna present it to the village as a whole. Let the village as a whole decide, not fifty people in a room.
No, I'm saying, we, we want to be presented with it, like.
Isn't that what I stated in my speaking with Mr. Weeden earlier? So I said, yes, I'm going to do that. I will have that. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. All right. Let me roll back the tape.
Sorry.
What I, I, I will repeat just for you and for Vinos. I've already contacted a security company that we used in the past for a small security event. They want to come with me and drive the village to understand our needs, to see if it's one car, two car, three cars, what's going to work to provide us with the proper amount of coverage in the nighttime hours, because we have a big village. One car might pass your house once. I've also spoken to one security camera company that's coming in on Friday to meet with me. The other one I'm speaking with tomorrow, hopefully meet with them Wednesday or Thursday, to get ballpark pricing on what a camera system's gonna cost. So I apologize.
Okay.
I didn't realize you came. Um, I'm, I'm proactively going to speak to some organizations, get some numbers and, and let the community, let the residents themselves decide if that's something we collectively want to do, because I'm not gonna provide a security patrol just for Cardinal Lane. I'm not gonna do it just by Frank's house or by Garrett's house. It'll be for everybody. And, and I don't know if everybody wants, I, I don't know what the cost is. I don't know if it's gonna cost us each a hundred dollars or five thousand dollars. I, I don't know until I know. And then we can make a decision collectively as a village, if this is something we all want, we all can afford, because not everybody is, is.
Mayor, can I just say, the one thing that's really bothering me about the meeting tonight, besides the fact that this is going on, is that it seems to be a lot more pervasive than even the police are acknowledging. And that's becoming real. That, the, the sense from the room I'm getting is very disquieting. Um, I will tell you, I live in the western portion of the area and I, we haven't really seen anything as far as I.
Well, I, I think I, it is an issue that, um, being close to Port Washington Boulevard makes you more prone to this activity. That's a battle.
And close to that border with Port Washington, but my, my thing is that if you people, if this goes on and the police get called and they won't come, we, you, the, the, the village, you have to inform us about that, because that's something that we can get on the sixth precinct about and say, this is nonsense. Uh, my, my area of town is actually, um, I have a different county legislature. My, uh, Richard Nicolello, who's actually the presiding officer of Nassau County, is my, my legislative person. Don't forget him when you're sending emails.
Well, he's, he's retired, he's gone.
Oh, he's retired? We took what, respond?
January first.
January first.
And also I think the entire district, it was redistricted in Delia's.
Well, I'm looking at the website today, that's all. I know who my guy was.
Takes effect, uh, January, it won't show until January first.
Yeah, okay. But my point being, I think this is the first, a lot of these things that we're hearing today is, I'm glad you guys are here. Because when we get the report from the police department every month, we're not getting the sense that this is becoming pervasive from, or at least I was, from the section of, of the village that I live in. So I think it's really important that if they, if you call them and they don't come, I want to know about that. I mean, I, the board wants to know about that.
Could, but if it was a, if it was a habit of people reporting it to the village after they reported to the police and that we could keep a record on following the village, so that we can compare notes, if you will, um, then that might be helpful to have a conversation.
Shh. All right, I'm gonna call the gentleman in the back, because he raised his hand first. I'll get you.
Quick question. Do you have any statistics for the part of Flower Hill, that's Port Washington Flower Hill? Do they get covered by Nassau and Port Washington?
So let me explain. The entirety of Flower Hill, the village of Flower Hill is Nassau County Police. There is no portion, there, there's this misnomer, there's this rumor going on that part of Port, part of Flower Hill is covered by the Port Washington Police. That is not true. It stops pretty much at the.
Uncle Giuseppe's.
Right.
No, which one?
They make a U-turn, they get a, a hero.
It stops at the auto parts store. Pretty much, that's, that's, that's as far south as this service provides. They do not provide any service for Flower Hill. We're all the sixth precinct of Nassau County Police Department. Yes, sir.
So you said you're gonna do these explorations and get information.
Sure, yes.
And then you said you're gonna put it up to the village itself. What does that actually mean by that? You, as the trustees of the board, have the purse strings and can do it, it becomes a referendum? How do we actually?
So the answer to that is yes. I don't know yet. Uh, this is all I'm researching today. If it's something that's a reasonable price, that's something that we can possibly absorb into our current budget, that might not need a referendum, but if it's something that's sizable, I think referendum might be a, a very good idea in this case. If it's something that's gonna cost us half a million dollars a year, that's a third of our budget. That, that caused for a very sizable tax increase. So I think at that point, perhaps, I'm not saying yes, but perhaps a referendum might be well in order for a very sizable tax increase.
Or at least public, public meetings, and it would be a serious public meetings at that point.
But, but whenever, again, until I know the numbers, I can't tell you what the plan is.
And you would have to confer with council on what the, the state requirements offer, those type of things.
Just wondering, if you, if you do not receive the mayor's newsletter on a monthly basis, that means we don't have your email. If we don't have your email, please, 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 before you leave tonight, give it to me so we can make sure that everybody is getting the communications on this.
Well, this and everything else. Any other times there are emergency, uh, notifications, we use our email system to let everybody know what's going on. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, my name is Gell. I live on Cardinal Road. The way I see it, it would be great to have a list of, of video cameras and private security, but I think ultimately, at the end of the day, what we're all concerned about, sheet metal's replaceable, but our children are not, okay? So I've implemented some things in my house just for peace of mind that I think maybe we should start doing also. So at night, no matter what, I do a round, I run the whole house, lock everything up. There's no garage door openers inside the car. Like you said, the keys go in RFID box. If they come to the house and have a scanner, they can extend the antenna and they can unlock their cars, even if the key is in the basement of the house. Take steps and then the word gets around. I can't hit this neighborhood anymore. These guys move in crews, okay? Last night, most likely the people that hit you, I'm on eight Cardinal. There was a silver Nissan Pathfinder, older, early nineties, goes wrong the block once. Then a black sedan at four thirty-one goes down running, most likely comes through Shanty Clear, comes back around running. So that's the only way you can do it, in my opinion. Four fifty-five. They're trailing each other. They're watching each other. Maybe group chat for the community. Maybe we should have a WhatsApp and say, hey, I'm seeing something here. Is anybody awake? Anybody seeing this? Someone's following me home. I'm gonna turn right on this road. Like, if we're a community, let's be a community. Granted, you guys are trying hard, but I think ultimately, at the end of the day, no one's scared of cameras. No one's scared of radio cameras. No one's listening shit about lights. So if you take matters into our own hands, not vigilante, but be vigilant, like someone said, to a certain point.
But that was a perfect situation that you described, that you should have called nine one one. When you see the same vehicle circling your block at four o'clock in the morning.
In fairness, I recognize the security system this afternoon.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, but those are the kind of things that, that.
I'd be happy to.
Those are, that is suspicious behavior.
I was excited.
Definition.
You know what happens, Frank? And when that happened to me Wednesday night, my heart was beating out. You're not thinking nine one one, but you know what? That's the most simplest thing to do. Nine one one, I have it on quick dial right now.
A lot of alarm systems have a button that you push.
So I'm like, you can investigate, right? Make sure, and we're safe, nine one one, this is what's happening. I'm having a true commitment to.
The police are telling you that they're not coming. That you gotta let us know.
Yeah.
Well, that, that comes with that.
We, we will, I will have chats with the people of this. That, that's not fair that people are trying to report something and not getting the reports in. So I will speak to Ms. Deriggy Witten and I will speak to the commander of the sixth. And I'll see if I can speak to Mr. Ryder and see what's going on there, because that's just, that's just not right, because now we can't act on statistics. Oh, and dial nine one one. Don't, don't, don't call the sixth precinct.
That was a mistake.
Never call the sixth, call the sixth precinct if your cat's stuck in a tree. Call nine one one. I've been told directly, directly by.
That's kind of the, they like.
So directly, so we were told a couple of months ago by Commander Vitelli, call nine, he doesn't care. He doesn't, they don't care what the incident is.
There was a guy sitting in the, in a car in the parking lot for like twenty minutes with a car running.
Yeah, Ronnie, call nine one one. So call nine one one. It, it's, everyone's been trained, that's the emergency number? No, it's, it's what the number you need to call the police. Don't look up what the sixth precinct number is and they answer that call less than they do nine one one. So call nine one one for everybody. That's, that's, that's what they recommended to us. As the police say, let them decide what's an emergency and not an emergency. You don't decide what number to call. Call nine one one and they decide what's urgent and what's not urgent.
There's very few people out at four o'clock in the morning that are not doing, that are there going to work. Let's just put it that way.
Yeah, I'll drive around.
Can you put that in your letter?
Sure, I will do it again. I've done it in the past. I'll do it again.
I did call the sixth precinct. I didn't know. I called before, when I first moved here, like when we first started, I didn't know. I was like, this is not an emergency, but kind of, I like, you know, like, I didn't think.
Let, I will, I will reiterate that. Let, the police always say, let them decide what's an emergency. If there's a suspicious person, that's nine one one. If there's a car driving around, that's nine one one. If someone at your doorstep, we shouldn't be there, it's nine one one. Let that, if, if you want the cat in the tree, call nine one one. Let them decide what's important and not important, because we all think it's not important, but it, to them, it might be something that's very important. Any other questions or, yes, sir?
Just one question on the, uh, you spoke about police, uh, police department, not, not security, but police department. It's starting one. Would there not be some kind of credit back from the, from the county or the state?
If you look at what, so we wouldn't pay this, look at your tax bill. Look at the very long, long tax bill. And if you need a copy of it, you should speak to the receiver for taxes.
After January.
After January one. There is a, a line item for police. It's a small amount of your tax. There's another line item that goes to, what's the, no, what's that line? Do you know the line I'm talking about? Police headquarter tax.
Yeah.
Port Washington Police, people living in Port Washington, covered by the Port Washington Police, still have to pay the headquarter tax, because that's the one when they have to send in, people do murder investigations, the hardcore stuff that local police departments can't do. So there's some savings on your tax bill, but it would never equal to the additional cost of either joining Port Washington Police or forming our own police department. The, the, the savings is very minimal compared to the actual cost.
Is there a new police commissioner? We could ask again, right?
There is a, there, there was, there's an election happening in December, September thirteenth.
Those are administrative positions. They're not law enforcement positions. So three commissioners, Port Washington Police is a district, so it, it falls under rules just like water districts and sewer districts. The commissioners are elected, but they are not law enforcement officers. They really have no role in law enforcement duties. The law enforcement duties are handled by the chief, uh, which is Rob Dumora. But Port Washington Police can't do anything for us. We're out of their jurisdiction.
No, I think, I think he's asking, can, can we ask them again?
It's the first time we've asked them.
We could, yeah. I mean, I, I, I see him, I ask him all the time. I see him all the time. I work on Port Washington. I know all these Port Washington cops. I know that, I know this, the command. I'm always kidding around with them, like, when are you gonna change your mind? When are you gonna come? He's like, it's just, it's, it's not manageable for them to do it, unfortunately. They don't have the, they don't have the, the manpower.
I will wait, how about this?
With their new facility that they're building, aren't they building something?
They, they are, they are planning on building their new facility. It's going to take years till they get done with it. They have to acquire the land, which they haven't acquired the land, and they have to get the funding, they have to knock down the buildings, build new buildings. What I'm gonna do is after the next election, which is December thirteenth, and we find out who wins, I'll reach out to them again and see if, if there's, I don't know who's gonna win. If there's a new commissioner, maybe they're interested in providing service, maybe not.
They need some funds to buy some land.
Maybe they need it. I can ask the question. We might get rejected again, but I'll, I'll ask the question again. I don't know how much it would cost us to do it, but I'll ask the question. It's something we as a community.
There would be an up, there would be an upfront cost. They would have to buy police cars, additional police cars. They would have to hire additional officers.
It's expensive to start a whole new police station.
It's significantly cheaper than starting our own police department.
But it's significantly more than what you could imagine right now.
Before we jump into.
But let me, let me find that out and I'll.
You necessarily want Port Washington to be a police department, because you have the Nassau County Police Department? I'm not sure I'm sold on that either.
But you want AG, let, let me find the cost. Again, it's, it, let the community decide.
We're a big village. My, my part of the village is nowhere near Port Washington, relatively speaking. So if you're gonna get them to patrol, they're gonna have to go all the way to the western portion of the village, which includes.
I hate to say it, I think that's part of the reason why they did it. They didn't say specifically, but they said part of it had to do with.
Yeah, they're, they're still, I think, recovering from the manor heaven situation. So, you know, I think it's, uh.
All right, any other?
I, I would just say one thing. Um, if, if even all can get your cars into your garages, that's the safest place to keep your cars. So, I, I mean, no, honestly, take away any kind of temptation. Taking the temptation of things in your car, don't be things in your car, but the biggest temptation is that a car is out on the lot. Uh, so I, I know it's not practical for some people, but I do, I would say that would be a really good remedy, at least a short-term remedy while.
We need to make our garages bigger.
Yeah, some people have more cars than garage spaces.
Sorry.
Some of us have more cars than garages, so.
Then it looks like nobody's home.
Right. All right.
There's no cars in the.
Are there any other questions? If not, you're fine.
It's a big dog.
If, if there's no other questions, I want to thank you for attending. Please, you can stay for the rest of the meeting if you want. It's very exciting stuff. But please, if you're leaving, give Ronnie your email addresses so we can add you to the database and then we can start emailing you all of our lovely newsletters and helpful hints and let you know on who to contact with the, uh, the Nassau County Legislature and our state.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in. We will, we will reconvene hopefully next month if I have some answers. Thank you. What's due to live on?
Country Club Drive, right across the street, seven, the first, the first house. Country Club Drive.
On the right-hand side?
Yeah, the right-hand side.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, yeah. So, what I did too now, with the column lights, I have a camera there, and lights that come on and off. Because they might be parked by the cemetery.
Yes, when you said cemetery, I'm like, what's, I'm like, the Flower Hill Cemetery.
So, the Port Washington Police budget is $12 million.
I know.
$12 million.
It's a lot of money, even in New York, that money.
And you think it's...
Right, and that's... I'm standing in my driveway, and a guy, two guys are there, and they're looking at me like, like seconds. They're not even worried.
What do you do?
You can't, you know, not there.
You don't worry, I always sometimes, 911.
911, don't go outside and confront them, call the cops. You do not want to get hurt over, over the car.
Take the car.
Oh, yeah, car.
Here, here the keys.
Here the keys.
Get a new car for the mall?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
No, thank you, I appreciate you coming in.
Where, you said you're an engineer?
Yeah. So, I like that. Oh, really?
Yeah.
What part is that? Oh, wow, awesome. So, I opened up the Fulton House and Atlas, and the Corbin Building.
What do you work with?
I used to work for Cause Construction, and then I worked for a company called Able Engineering.
All right, we gotta, we gotta, you wanna sign it for Ronnie, you are. Yeah, yeah.
I'm actually a Nassau Coliseum.
Oh, really?
Yes.
All right, let us continue. All right, we're gonna start, if he, we're gonna... Oh, yeah, yeah, if he doesn't have it ready, okay. I avoid, I avoid... Bad people. All right. Exactly. All right, Ronnie, you wanna continue our lovely meeting?
Wow.
All right, approval of minutes?
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the November 8th meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Number second?
I'll second it.
Who's that?
Me, the mayor.
Oh, you don't sound like you're so...
Need a mayor.
I'm out, I'm out of voice today.
Okay. Trustees report, any questions on the claims?
Don't we all have to vote aye for the claim?
On the minutes, all of them from the minutes?
Aye.
Anybody to vote? Claims, any questions?
I want one.
Now, the only question I had is something that Rich will be addressing with the salt company, but otherwise, I think we're good.
Okay, and I just wanted to hold the check for the generator until it's been tested.
Oh, they didn't test it yet?
At least so. Has John tested?
Yeah.
Okay, Suzanne, you can pay it.
I have the check on my tab.
Okay, good, all right. Because when we were signing the checks, they were still working on it.
Right, so I'll make the motion to approve the claims.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Help of works, anything new?
Oh, yes.
The generator was installed. Definitely not smaller than the other one that we had.
Well, smaller size, but it has larger capacity.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It's quieter, and it's more efficient, you know, than the other one we had was a Chrysler engine.
The other one was a Chrysler six-cylinder car engine, this is a nice two-cylinder.
It was an engine too, but it's just... It's actually a truck engine, a Chrysler truck engine.
The old one was at least, the old one was at least 20 years old.
It was gas?
Yeah.
How old was that, amazing?
Chrysler with a Baron.
It's a K car.
K car.
Hey, I had one, it was a four-cylinder. I want to thank you and the guys for coming in on Saturday to do the metal lifter cleanup, which, the reason we authorize the overtime of Saturday is for safety purposes. That road, when they try to do it during the week, it's, it's, it's a nightmare. Even with, even with the light board, it's a nightmare, because what they have to do, Frank, is with the street sweeper, they go forward, then they have to come back, and they have to go forward.
I check them every day.
I know, you weren't there on Saturday, you were on Saturday?
No.
He didn't show up, we had a bet if you were gonna show up.
It's so much easier on Saturday, so they were able to do it, no traffic, it was, nobody had any problems.
So, thank the guys for coming in on Saturday.
Peter?
Okay, the architect committee, November 27th, we had seven applications for 1025 Village Boulevard, that's the, what was building at the fire, we had a proposal in for one store, the bank, that was before the trustees, last month. We asked for a number of additional information, rendering, details, and so forth, that we come back. From the zoning board, 58 Newland, for a new house, that application was approved as we did. New applications, 32 Sunset, proposed front portico, we had a couple of specific comments, and that appeared approved with complying with those conditions, so that's for your approval. 17 Ridge Drive West, addition to exterior alterations, we had a number of concerns there, the comments, and we asked them to return for the rest of the month. 87 Port Washington Boulevard, additions and alterations. A number of, we went through a number of suggestions for them, and there were some significant changes, we asked them to come back. 35 Great Lane, new residents, we had some specific requests on that. If they can, if they have ideas, come back with addressing those items, then it's for approval. If not, they will come back for next, next meeting. And then 77 Country Club Drive, exterior alterations. Generally felt that that design was too similar with the neighborhood, and we asked them to come back for redesign.
Excellent.
Who, tree permits, do you monitor tree permits? Who monitors tree permits? Tree, tree cutting.
Anne.
Did you check to see Saturday, they were cutting down trees on...
There's no, there's no cutting on Saturday.
Well, they were cutting all day Saturday.
Why don't you text me, because I can go and take care of it.
Jack told me that one that was on Saturday.
All day, from 7:30 in the morning till six, on Maple and Burstdale, they were, they were cutting a bunch of trees down. You know, right over that area, yeah. Oh, so Jack might have known about it, okay.
Jack might have been around on Saturday, I think he was, but you know what? If there's something, so there's no, so there's, but Jack, so...
I usually text you, but...
Yeah, no, this is the time you're supposed to text me, because I can make that stop.
He mentioned that he stopped somebody doing tree down.
Good, because I can't guarantee...
It was all day long?
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's bad. But let me know next time, that's what I'm around here for. Jack can't catch everybody all the time.
Unless it was a spunta, whatever else guys want me to...
There's, there's no, we don't allow, so we changed our code last year.
But the utility companies are exempt, aren't they?
If it, Asplund, if they're doing an emergency...
Utility or...
Yeah, it's a utility.
But if they're doing it all day, it wasn't, they, they are required to get permits. Asplund as well, they think, they should know better, but thank you. So, I guess I'll make a motion to accept the ARC report as presented by our building superintendent. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, actually, first, does anyone from the audience have any questions on this? I forgot to do that, I have to go through your team.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, except for Mr. Lewandowski.
I'm abstaining.
As always.
While we have Peter, I have one question. There's been work going on at 55 Old Pine Drive at all hours of the night, across the street from where AJ is. I don't even think they have a perimeter. I think, yeah, 55 Old Pine Drive, it's on corner of Old Pine Drive.
At night?
And even at night, it seems like it. It was obviously inside, but they did a whole exterior replating and, and replacement windows, and larger windows and...
I just don't recall, I thought I had a perimeter, not an obstacle.
So, the Fort Mason and Old Pine Drive.
Don't, don't wait for the board meeting, you can reach out to Peter.
I've been meaning for the last few days, but I think I'm...
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Albinski, you are dismissed.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you all.
I'm doing really well with Toys for Tots collection. The last date for collection is December 13th. There was quite a bit of, I mentioned the food drive, that was picked up by Claire's husband for delivery. The village elections are coming up, so the actual village election day is March 19th, that's Tuesday. Election, voting is from 6:30 AM to 9:00 PM.
6:00 AM.
Six, oh, in the, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
It's Suzanne's favorite time.
Although, if the board wants to change it to 6:30, we can do so at the January meeting, before we have the election regulations. Anyway, so I just wanted to let everybody know that petitioning begins on January 2nd and ends on February 13th.
Thank you for that information.
Next is, the meeting calendar of 2024 is in your packets, and I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt that calendar.
The meeting calendar?
The meeting calendar, all the meetings are next year.
I will make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
AJ, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Another thing I wanted to add was that the fire panel will be installed tomorrow. So, we will probably be in compliance.
Yes, excellent news, thank you.
Anything?
No, several reports, the VCA did not meet last month.
Oh, zoning board did not meet, interesting.
No, there was an error in one of the notices that was sent out by one of the, by the applicant, so they had it concrete done for this month.
Was the meeting only for one applicant, then? Oh, that's light, okay.
This month is crazy.
No, that's usually what happens, one month bad, one month in. Nothing else, Jeff? Be sure, we miss hearing from you, you're so quiet.
Well, I'll just tell you that I did send around a amended grant of the commonest restrictions based on the board's discussion last month. The county's in agreement with the proposed changes, I'll recirculate that to the board for review.
Excellent.
Based on the board's wishes, I just suggested next month it could be approved. You previously approved this subject, correct?
Good, I'm shocked that the county's got back with that.
Still not fully approved?
It was just approved subject to that, but the county was not saying their plans for those changes.
This is definitely going into '24.
Next month would be '24, so yes.
When do we have the party associated with the final approval of this event?
Very soon. Trustees report. None? I will do a very quick mayor's report.
Oh, good.
Oh, sorry, ma'am.
Just remind everybody that the light the night...
That's in my mayor's report, but go for it instead.
That the Flower Hill Women's Club had to postpone because of weather, the Christmas tree and menorah lighting, right? And light the night, so it'll all be this coming Sunday at 4:00.
December 10th, 4:00 PM at Village Hall. Hot chocolate and cookies will be served, that's the most important part. And if we're lucky, a fire truck will be there at San Luis, they can pull it off again. Other news, the Webster Avenue Bridge is reopened, thank you, Gary, and thank you to Mr. Smith, your bridge is back. If I hear, as soon as the Long Island Railroad lets us know about the long-term plan, we will keep the...
Yeah, I think there's an interesting long-term plan.
There is, but I don't know what it is, and it's out to bid, and we'll sing about that. Landscaper debris. I will remind all of our residents that your landscaper is not supposed to be leaving their yard waste and all the bag of leaves at the homes. We got a phone call from our friends at the carding company, and some of these landscapers are leaving like 100-pound bags of leaves behind, because once you chop everything up, it gets heavy, and it might be 20 bags. And it's not part of our contract with the carding company. So, I've asked Jack to keep an eye on it, speak to the contractors where we're having these problems, and to issue violations as needed.
So, while we're talking about debris and Jack and all kinds of stuff?
Yeah.
So, the village code is very specific about when you can put trash out at the curb. It's 6:00 the night before your scheduled pickup.
Yes.
However, I have been seeing more and more, and it's really starting to get like out of control, people putting furniture, things out on the curb Friday night, Saturday mornings, and it sits there all weekend. Can we get the word out to people that they cannot do that?
Not only will, the word out to people...
Can it be in the email, the...
I can do that, I will ask Jack to, I don't want him to issue violations, but ask him to have a pre-canned warning in his car that he can start slapping on these things and...
Because it looks terrible on the weekends to have all this stuff.
This is your pet peeve, I know, because that house...
Well, I have the signs, the contractor signs and other signs, that's my next one, but I'll wait till another point.
Hey, listen, I've been, I drive around, I pull the sign, I pull whatever signs and I'll ride away down.
Gary and I had a situation, so...
Garbage, but I'll put that in the note, I'll talk to Jeff as well.
There's been a for sale signs on the house on Stony Town for weeks. Three signs, red signs just east of...
Oh, I saw that.
Stony Town.
For sale by owner.
They gotta come off. All these gyms and stuff.
Oh, no, no, he, not only has Jack been getting them, and Christmas light ones, he's, as he can, he issues violations. Some of these companies are just not, you can't find them.
But can, can you guys, if you see a sign, can you pick it up and drop it? Because I do it, I take them.
I took a bunch down this weekend and put them in the garbage for Rich.
No, it's an election one down.
Yeah, yep, I got one side of the road, you got the other side of the road on Saturday.
Have we had a black Chevy? I did. The trunk's open?
Just got robbed. Hey, just got broken in.
Um...
It's my wife's car, and then I drive it.
All right, we got that, we got that. I attended NICOM's legislative priorities meeting. My big priorities that I've asked them to deal with the village is increase our hiring funding and increase state aid to cities and villages, because that helps us pay for all this great stuff that we provide the services. And I think that's the end of my mayor's report, that was a pretty easy one.
Okay. New business, okay. So, a while ago, the mayor had discussed with you the idea of selling the dead-end portion of Birch Lane, which is the very end of, at the intersection with Eltra Fields. So, we looked into hiring an appraiser to determine what the value of that property would be. So, I've gotten three quotes from appraisers, I think I got a very good price, but of course, it's up to the board to decide they want to...
Just as a piece of information, we can't just sell a piece of village property. It would have to go out to, in essence, to auction, I believe, correct, Jeff? So, I can't just contract with a resident and say, "Hey, buy the street." Birch Lane, the dead end of Birch Lane, the owner of both properties has, has expressed an interest in the past of buying the road.
He calls me on it like every other week to point out what's going on, he's very interested.
So, the reason I'm interested in removing this from our part of roads.
Mrs. Gabrielle, right? Yeah.
Regardless of who it is.
We've been talking about this for years.
Well, I'm trying to move it forward, so everybody who doesn't know, oh, you know what? Let's wait for AJ to come back, because AJ, I forgot, Mr. Open Trump.
I mean, in this kind of situation, no one's gonna bid on it, no one wants that other than them. Unless somebody wants to buy it just...
There's no value.
Let's reconvene when...
You can't do anything with it, you can't do it. You can't do anything with it.
You know what, let's, let's move on to the new business, um, there's a res, we want a cast resolution to invest in CDs, we're going to bank CD Bank. Um, so purchase, you know, purchasing the CDs doesn't require a resolution, so we're best to get the board at this time.
Well, I have to wait till AJ comes back also for that.
On the CDs?
Well, don't you want the full board to vote on this?
Well, I mean, we haven't decided on the amount and the interest rate, it's just like a preliminary.
I'll be back, just a.
How long, how long would we lock in for? Oh, 12 months?
No, four to six.
Four months to, four to six months.
Oh, are we rotating or just?
So we need to do two things. One, we need to pass a resolution allowing the village to invest in CDs. Then secondly, we get to discuss the purchase of what CDs for, of what?
Scalchel?
Yes. So we need to, we, yes, ladder, that's my favorite word. So we could do two things, one, we have to approve allowing us to invest in CDs, and secondly, we decide on the matters. But I, sorry AJ, he's probably gonna be back in three seconds, so we can, we can talk amongst ourselves. Unless you want to talk about the fire district, uh?
Um, yeah, sure, so we got, um, news from the Roseland Fire District that the 2024 contract is actually going down.
You know, Frank's gonna be shocked.
So about $30,000, so.
Good job, Randall.
Yeah, thank you. I have been. Yes. I haven't even looked at it, Ronnie just got it right before the board meeting, I didn't have a chance to look at it and analyze it.
That's surprising.
Welcome back to Mr. Smith, was, was your car broken into?
Well, I think people put toys in for the toy truck, so I gotta donate those.
Excellent.
You get volunteered to deliver them.
All right, so to circle, circle back where our conversation was, we were discussing about authorizing the hiring of a, because.
Yeah, the sale of the dead-end portion of Birch Lane.
The reason.
We need an appraiser.
Correct. So the reason we want to sell it is for a couple of purposes, one, it costs us money to clean it, to maintain it, to plow snow, and it's a dead-end road that really has no purpose for us. The homeowner there has expressed interest, but we're required to have it appraised before we go to public auction. So I think long-term, this might cost us a couple of dollars to hire a, um, appraiser, but long-term, I think it'll save the village a lot of money, because we'll never have to pave the street again. So I think it's kind of a win-win for.
Plow.
The village.
Or plow, or anything.
Anything sweet, good.
It'll be easier for it, Rich will have to back down the damn street with a plow. So, um, what was the cheapest?
I think it was SBS, I believe it was $3,500.
Does anybody, before I ask for a vote on this, does anyone have any questions about this? Either from.
$3,500.
No, you've seen their life just.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz.
It's probably a dumb question, but you like that kind of thing. I know, it's a very short little segment. Um, what impact would this sale have on our CHIPS money?
Minimal. We're talking a 50-foot road.
Interestingly, this month, I just, um, added two cul-de-sacs to our road total, because I noticed that they weren't included in, in, you know, in our CHIPS calculation. So we did have two cul-de-sacs on Birch Lane and Maple, that increased us like a little bit, maybe that'll make up for it.
I'd like to think that 50 years of CHIPS funding for that teeny bit of road would never pay for the repaving costs, when that road needs to be repaved. So I, I think this is a win. So if there's no other questions, I would like to make, to make a motion to approve, um, SBS valuation services to provide the property valuation services for this portion of Birch Lane.
For $3,500?
Affirmative, for $3,500, thank you.
I'll second it.
All aye?
Aye. Any opposed or any abstentions? Wonderful. All right, Ronnie can go back to CDs.
Okay, now we're going to, uh, resolution to invest in CDs with, with TD Bank. Um, we haven't, um, determined the amount into each account yet, but, um, we wanted to pick the resolution so that as soon as the account is active, we'd be able to do so. Uh, they would be before six months, and the rates are, um, five, 5% plus.
So first, let's make, let's pass the motion on allowing CDs to be an investable instrument, then we can talk about the dollars.
So I'm assuming you already checked that you are, we are allowed as a village to invest, invest in CDs, right? There's no, there's no bank?
We are 100% aware.
Okay.
Our bank and various banks we're speaking with have multiple municipalities, this is a standard investment.
I just dumped it.
Yeah. So I'll make the motion to allow Village Flower Hill to invest in CDs with, do I say specifically with TD Bank?
With?
TD Bank?
TD Bank.
I'll make that motion then.
Second?
I will second.
The mayor, all aye?
My question is, why, why are we letting it to TD Bank?
Because that's the bank we're doing, we're gonna start doing business with, we're moving our, our banking.
No, I understand that, but then if we want to take it out, we can't put it into a different bank without another vote.
You know what, you're saying, he's saying, if you say TD Bank, then you locked yourself in, let's say you want to go, we have a relationship with another bank, then you have to do another.
Well, eventually, don't, but, and, and I'm guessing within five minutes, we're gonna have a vote to invest with TD Bank in the structure that you built. My, my point here is why now are we making, because someday, 10 years from now, the person doing your job may say TD Bank is out of business, or they just got bought, it takes all the money, puts it in a different bank, and it technically a violation of what we just did tonight, because.
Just do this resolution, that's all.
So my, my point is, I just don't understand why the resolution is just to allow you to invest in CDs.
I always believed that it has to be specific.
Okay.
That's, you're, you're right, that would make a lot more sense, we don't have to do, because we have to make a new resolution if we change the banks. And guess what? If TD, if TD Bank's rates stink and other banks are better, we will move banks again.
And I think you're covered if the bank is sold to another bank, I think that that, that covers.
But not even that, AJ's talking about if we just don't want to deal with this bank and put another bank.
Yeah, who knows what's gonna happen, interest rates.
All right, that being said, I'm gonna make the motion, Gary seconded it.
Okay, all aye?
Aye.
Um, okay, we've already introduced.
Do we want to discuss about the dollar numbers? Because I think, I think what we worked on, I think this is a legit.
We all saw that, we've done that.
You know, Suzanne, Suzanne helped me prepare this based on her expertise of our financial needs over the next six months to make sure that we have enough money to be liquid, and we will certainly have plenty of money to be liquid with this minimal amount of investing in CDs. Correct, Ms. Tangredi?
You never say greedy.
Tangredi, sorry.
Yes, um, in the numbers that we've looked at, once all the monies have been transferred into, uh, TD Bank, we should be able to do those investments easily and not put any strain on the village minds.
Perfect, and then at the beginning of our financial tax year, when new monies come in, we will readdress it and invest additional funds so that we can hopefully, uh, be making money to pay for these lovely security systems and cameras and patrols and police cars.
Police departments.
And police departments. Listen, if we make enough money, we can afford these things, so it's all good to bring money.
We need a vote.
So do I need to make a motion to do this? This, the, the.
I'd love to have it, so prefer, then I'll refer to the chart.
Okay, so then we're okay with the chart. Um, are there any other issues that we need to discuss as a board?
I'm gonna introduce the fence law, I mean, since when I was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did it make a way?
No, no, no.
Did that get resolved with that?
It did, they resolved it, they have fences on.
Wait, that's not, that's, oh, here it is, you know, let's, let's introduce local law L for fences as written and put in our packet, but we're not gonna hold the public hearing until we have another public hearing, because I'm not gonna waste village taxpayer resources on a single law. We'll wait till we have another.
The effective.
Yeah, you know what, this is going to change, and it's gonna have to become like local law A of 2024.
But can we introduce it now, so we've introduced it?
So if anybody wants to make any changes, we can do so in the next meeting.
All right, so I will, I will make a motion to introduce the fence update of our fence code.